The recorder is on.
Thank you. Right, I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the town of Stonington zoning board of appeals, special because it's a virtual meeting, the date is May 11th, 2021, time is 7:00 PM. For roll call, I'm James Kane, I'm this chairman, Jeff Walker.
I'm here.
Nat Trumbull.
Nat's here.
Mark Mitsko.
Yeah.
Raymond Salt is not here, James Stanton.
Here.
And Diana Lori Borsma.
Here.
Okay, and I'm going to see James Stanton for Raymond de Salt. And Diana, you can sit in if you like, the only thing you won't be able to do is to vote, once we close the public hearing. For new business, this will probably be our last Zoom meeting. I got a notice from the first selectman that the governor's going to open up town meetings again, starting May 20th. Unless he changes his mind because something happens. So we can expect our next meeting to be at the Stonington Town Police Station at 7:00 PM. So we'll be in person. For public hearing tonight, I'm going to start with, actually, it's the second one listed on the agenda. Because there, we're not going to do that one, so ZBA, wait, wait. There we have it, okay, before public hearing, per the governor's executive order, seven, parentheses, I, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, the notice of this virtual public hearing was posted on this town of Stonington website on Friday, April 30th, 2021, which is not more than 15,15 or less than 10,10 days prior to this hearing. And it takes four votes of this five-person board to grant a variance. In order for a variance to be granted, the applicant must prove a hardship. After the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, this board has 65, that's six, five days to render a decision. Any decision made by this board can be appealed to the Superior Court within 15,15 days of the effective date. So we already introduced the board members. And the way it works is first we'll hear from the applicant, then all those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition. Then, if anyone has any general comments, they will be heard. The applicant has the right for rebuttal. However, if any new points are raised during the rebuttal, the public has the right to respond. All persons wishing to speak must sign speaker's list, and in this case, you must state your name and where you live. Since, since this hearing is being recorded, everyone is asked to speak clearly, so that we can hear you through Zoom and mute while you're not actually speaking, please. And with that, I'll open the first public hearing, whoops, there is it. ZBA number 21, Tac 06, Manley and Sharon Church, Markomo Agent. Seeking a variance from ZR 5.1.1 to reduce side yard setback from 75 feet to 25 feet for construction of an attached garage. Property located on 69 Womfassick, Womfassick Road, Stonington. Assessors map 126, block 4, lot 3, Zone RC Tac 120. And this was going to be rescheduled, so our next meeting, which is June, so there'll be no action of this tonight. It's being rescheduled to the next meeting on June 8th of this year. Now, we will do the other public hearing. ZBA number 21-05, Jennifer and Daniel Wilson. Seeking a variance from ZR 5.1.1 to reduce side yard setback from 10 feet to 1.5 feet to construct a pergola with privacy fence. Property located on 2 Plover Lane, Mystic. Assessors map 176, block 2, lot 7, Zone RA Tac 20. And Jennifer and Daniel, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, town staff, members of the public. My name is Gregory Pietz, I'm an attorney and I represent Jennifer and Daniel Wilson. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight in support of this variance application. If I could, I'm going to try to share my screen and just give a little presentation to the board. You will hear from Mrs. Wilson in a moment. Hopefully, my, my screen is being shared at this point, if it's not, please let me know.
It is, we can see it.
Thank you, okay. This application, I want to stress, is about topography. It's not about decks, and it's not really about trees, though it somewhat is, it's about topography. And topography has long been recognized as a basis for granting a variance. Provided that there's something unique about that topographical condition that is not shared by other properties in the surrounding area. So, as a result, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, as a starting point, show what we've called as a GIS map, and we have overlaid the contour lines that are shown. Just to orient the board, the applicant's property is number two, Plover. And next door is number one, Plover. Mason's Island and Chippodraug Trail are to the left. As the board can see from the topo lines, and I believe that this illustrates, of course, there is a general downsloping from left to right as you approach the water, but it's fairly gentle. The lots in the surrounding areas are of course small, but very few of the buildings are on top of the property lines. One of the things that I would indicate from this overall high-level view is that there is some unique topography as it pertains to numbers one and number two, Plover. The board can see that Seagull Lane actually goes down to the water, it's a paper street in this area. But these, and I'm going to show a close-up from a survey in a moment. But what you can see is from that paper road, you have a steep incline up to one, Plover. And then in particular, what you're showing or what you're seeing here on these topo lines is a very steep down gradient onto my client's property, which is number two. And that is something that if you look elsewhere on this map, you're not generally finding, particularly as it pertains and is located directly on a property line between the two properties. Another thing that I don't want to forget to mention is that there's something also unique about number one, which is the neighbor. And that due to the size of this lot, they benefit and have a five-yard, excuse me, five-foot side yard setback here, whereas everybody else has a 10-foot side yard setback. That's a peculiarity of the regulations due to the size of this lot. But you already have something that's not particularly in common with the rest of the area, which is that the development potential of this house, which is right next door to us, is able to be located an additional five feet to the, to the property line. What I'd like to submit into the record, and in fact, I'm going to put this entire slide presentation into the record, is a, this is a retaining wall layout plan that was performed by Transient Associates. This is the full plan, I am going to zoom in a little bit to show the board a little bit more of that detail that I was talking about. You can see down, this is at the top area here, this is the Seagull Lane Paper Street that comes down to the water. And you can see here, it's at about five feet, and comes up rapidly and fairly steeply up to an elevation of about 18, 19 feet in this driveway area. In return, it's, as you come to the south, it slopes down very steeply. You can see how tight these contour lines are towards my client's property. Now, what this shows on this plan, and there are photos that are part of the staff report in the application, but the shower that we're talking about is in this general area. And the stairway that my clients use to go from their shower back into their houses here. I want to make abundant note that both the shower and the stairwell are both outside the 10-foot setback. What this plan shows in detail, however, is the, something that's new, that's happened recently since my clients have purchased the property. Granted, it was very steep here, but you can see that these 18, 17, 16, these, these topo lines are being filled in by the neighbors at number one. And you are having a, you'll see in the photos, a pretty monolithic retaining wall that's been put in. There's a separate retaining wall that comes down, that's just upon the property line. And you can see that, based upon the, the top of wall, you know, this is, this is up at 20 feet coming down here in a very short span, down to about six and seven feet. So it's, it's very monolithic, and that's actually been exacerbated by the site work that's been done by the neighbor. And we have some photos that I want to put in, so just to orient. First photo is actually in the front yard of the Wilsons' property, of my client's property, sort of right out in front of their front door, the red arrow shows the, basically the spot where it was taken and how we're facing. And what you can see is that there are two tiers of retaining walls that have been put in by the neighbor. The first is a somewhat limited retaining wall, which is essentially on the property line. And behind that, just, just over five feet, literally on their setback line, is this monolithic retaining wall. And this is current condition, these photos were taken just last weekend, I should say about 10 days ago. So that's sort of what my clients are coming home to. And you can see that this retaining wall, it, it's not really an optical illusion, it is almost above even the height of, of their garage doors. Again, to sort of reorient to where we're talking about, from when my client's coming out of their outdoor shower, this, this is their view of, of what they look at on the deck, looking to the left, looking straight ahead is, is, is this building. The, a couple of things I want to point out on this, so this, this, what you're seeing here, these cut joists are actually a deck that had been built there, and our understanding is it's going to be rebuilt. This, what you're looking at directly at grade is actually not the first floor of the building, that's really the lower level of the building. If you follow that concrete wall, what you're looking at here on the top is actually the first floor of the building. And then if you look to your right coming out, you can sort of get a better view of this. So the entire first floor of, of the house next door sits up a full story, plus some, when you take this additional retaining wall into account from my client's property. In addition, there is going to be a deck that is going to be built, all at the same level as that first floor, and that deck is going to wrap around as well. One of the things that you're seeing in this photograph at the top is, in fact, there's been an upward addition on this house as well, rather than a cathedral ceiling. The, the neighbor next door has added a third floor, which again is just feet from the property line. And we'll see it better, but they've also adding a deck up on the second floor as well. Going into the backyard and looking back towards the street, you get a better sense of this. So again, here's the retaining wall that's approximately 13, 14 feet high. And as you follow that line, you can see how that essentially lines up with the deck. So the entire front of the house is set up on the, and an elevation to be a whole story above this.
My iPad and.
And again, this is the new, up at the top, third floor that's been built. I don't have their measurements, but it appears as though they've, it's not maxed out, close to maxed out their height. And again, they've added a new deck, which is, is way high above. So this gives a sense of the topographical change, now that they have sort of built up the entire property to be at street level, whereas this backyard is many, many feet below. And the, the other thing striking to me is that I think this photo actually just really demonstrates the sort of the, the massing and the sort of relative position of the two houses next to each other. Another photo from the backyard, just to give the broader context for the board in terms of what we're looking at in terms of the proximity. I added this photo, which was taken in the summer of 2020, just to give a sense of, this is the old house before the third story was added on. This also gives another visual for the board as to the size of the deck that's going to be installed next door. And again, the change in gradient between the first floor living space of the house next door and the yard at my client's property. And then this is just another photo from the property line. And one of the things I wanted to focus on, on this one, it gives a good illustration. So the, the board can see where I'm circling here, this is the outdoor shower, this is the staircase that they go up in their house. I can't emphasize enough, the shower and the stairs are both outside the setback, they're more than 10 feet from the property line. There is no, whether it's become a, whether it's been there for three years or not, neither the shower nor the stairs are within the setback. And the issue that my clients have expressed, and I think you'll hear a little bit more about, is that as they're coming from their shower and a towel to go back into their house, next door, they have a very close proximity this house that's basically story and a half towering above that, plus another new story, plus another deck on top of that. And I think that this photo illustrates the change in grade, the way that this new retaining wall adds to the massing and the, the visual effect between the two properties. So with that, I know that Mrs. Wilson wants to address the board and give her thoughts and comments as to why she is seeking the variance, and I would turn the floor over to her if I could.
Thank you, Greg, good evening, everyone. My name is Jen Wilson, and I'm here tonight with my husband, Dan. We are the owners of 2 Plover Lane on Mason's Island, and we are seeking this variance at tonight's meeting. We appreciate this opportunity to speak in support of our variance and to also respond to some of the comments of our opposing neighbor as presented in Attorney Brant's letter. We'd like to begin by addressing the newly erected retaining walls at One Seagull and the unique topography of our property at 2 Plover Lane. One of the reasons for our variance request is to screen the imposing view of the newly constructed cement retaining walls at One Seagull. These two retaining walls, particularly the taller one, which rises to approximately 13 feet, as Greg mentioned, have a significant visual presence in proximity to our property. They provide a dismal, unattractive finish to our property, and they are a complete contradiction to Mr. Brant's statement of a yard setback being required to provide light and air to the adjacent property. These walls were erected and allowed within the constraints and interpretation of the zoning regulations. However, they were done so to the detriment of our property and that of the entire neighborhood. These retaining walls were built by our neighbors at One Seagull, and their construction was utterly beyond our control. We cannot change these walls, nor the zoning regulations that allowed these walls to be built, but we are asking to be able to screen them from our view. In addition to being a complete eyesore, these walls have exacerbated what has already been a significant topographical change between the two properties, as Greg just spoke to. Our parcels sit at a significantly lower elevation, which also includes a second-story wraparound deck. This was unique to the neighborhood prior to the Georgiottis' purchase of the property, but it has been exacerbated by the construction and the addition of their third level. With our home being set at the lowest elevation of the neighborhood, all of these changes have created the feeling that they are towering over us. Without some sort of privacy screening, the side area of our home has become completely unusable. If not for the unique topography, a standard privacy fence and a few strategically placed trees would provide the privacy we seek in such a tight space. Unfortunately, due to the significant change in grade, a simple seven-foot fence that zoning would allow would be completely ineffective. That said, the intention of the pergola is for the pergola top to act like a privacy fence from above, providing some relief from the hardship that our neighbors at One Seagull have created. I'd also like to point out that Dan and I have put a great deal of thought into a solution for this space that would provide the privacy we seek with as little impact to our neighbors as possible. That said, the proposed pergola would stand slightly lower in height than the 13-foot tall cement retaining wall, and would provide a clean privacy barrier with a fixed height and fixed width, unlike the alternative of maturing trees. We believe this to be a benefit both for our privacy as well as the neighbors of One Seagull. Also to note, the height and visual impact of the proposed pergola is actually reduced for them due to the elevation of their property. Regarding the trees, another change that was completely outside of our control is the removal of the vegetative screening between our two properties. By way of background, I met with Fotus at his property in December of 2019 to discuss his desire to remove the existing trees that were located directly on our shared property line, to clean up the area, and most importantly, to then replant the property boundary with an evergreen hedge that would provide privacy between the two properties. The plan he described to me is as shown on his site plan dated January 7th, 2020. I agreed to this plan as it was presented to me, with the expectation that the evergreen hedge would in fact be planted. To my dismay, once the old trees were removed, his plans changed and the new hedge was deleted. Of course, if I had known this was the promise would be abandoned, I never would have consented. To say that I've consented to the current lack of a vegetative buffer is misleading and entirely out of context. That leads to my emails, which Attorney Brant also quotes completely out of context. The photo he submitted shows trees that were located on my property approximately 50 to 60 feet from the area I'm now trying to buffer. My comments of "if you'd like it gone, go for it" and have added were related only to the one dogwood tree shown at the left of the photograph, and that tree was located at the edge of the street. This dogwood tree was nowhere near the shower or side stairs to my house and did nothing to provide the screening that I'm now trying to replace. And might I also say that all of this is actually a sign of how I was trying to be accommodating to Fotus with his new building plans. All of this said, I did give my consent in order to be neighborly, with the apparently naive expectation that Fotus would be neighborly in return. Had I known that he would abandon his proposed replacement evergreen buffer or that he would now send a lawyer here to object to our modest request, I certainly would have made a different decision. Moving on to cameras, the complaint about the one Nest camera located on our property line is also misleading. We do have one camera that is focused on our backyard and property line, not on our neighbor's house. What you haven't been told is that on April 9th, Fotus summoned the Stonington Police to our property to complain about this camera, accusing us of voyeurism. The police told both me by telephone and Mrs. Georgiottis that the camera is legal in its current location and purpose. Case closed. I have no idea why their lawyer persisted in raising this issue a week later in his objection letter. What is concerning as it relates to security cameras is Fotus' plan, as he personally communicated to me, to install 36 security cameras on his new home. Think about that, 36 cameras, I've never heard of such a thing. While I do not believe that the Georgiottis have any intention of aiming these cameras specifically at our shower area, I do believe that it will be nearly impossible to avoid such footage with so many cameras and so little privacy and distance between the two houses. And finally, the issue of the deck. The suggestion that we have illegally constructed a deck in violation of zoning regulations is a material misrepresentation of the facts. As Greg mentioned, we purchased our home at 2 Plover Lane in June of 2014, and the deck in question existed at this time. In fact, it has now existed for over 23 years. Since purchasing the home, we have indeed repaired the deck, replacing the rotten wood. However, neither the location nor the size of the deck was altered in this process. More importantly, the deck itself has nothing to do with this application. We did not file this application because we want to cover a deck. We filed this application because we want to be able to use this portion of our property for its intended purpose. Our goal is just to regain some privacy and screening to be able to modestly utilize our outdoor shower, a shower that is entirely located outside the setback of our yard. In conclusion, for all the reasons that we stated in our initial variance request and that we have further elaborated on tonight, we ask the board to please approve our variance application. I want to thank you all in advance for your time this evening and your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
All right, thank you, Jennifer.
I, I have a little bit more, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll wrap up.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, Mrs. Wilson, the photos that have been put into the record, are, are these all true and accurate representations of the current conditions on the site? Mrs. Wilson?
Yeah, sorry, I muted you, yes, they are.
For the record, I just wanted to put in map 3187, this is from the Stonington Land Records. It's from 1997, it shows that deck in its current location, to the extent that it's relevant, we don't think it is. But we just wanted to put this in to show that that deck has been there for over 20 years, going on 25 years. Ms. Wilson, Mrs. Wilson, I, I think you've seen this photograph, this was introduced by Mr. Brant in his letter. Could you just explain where these trees are?
Sure, so that's actually, if you look all the way to the left, you can see houses in the background. So that is actually Charlie Beebe's house at Three Seagull, which is across the street from One Seagull and us. So that is, the dogwood tree is directly on the street, just at our property line, slightly over. And then the three evergreens are actually on our property line in the front yard.
Okay, so which, in, in the emails that went into the record in terms of go for it, which tree were you referring to? And which tree was being discussed in those emails?
That was strictly the one on the left that had the ivy growing up it, which actually, I believe, if I look at it, I even questioned, you mean the dogwood, and Fotus said, yes, the one with the ivy growing up it, in that email exchange.
And just going back to the site plan, does this star accurately represent where that dogwood was located?
Pretty close, yes.
So that's that. The other three trees that are more at the center of the photograph, are they still there today?
They are not, actually, there was significant root damage from the construction of the cement retaining walls. And between that and our reconfiguration of the front of our property to hide, to shield the view of those walls from the front of the property, those have been removed with a plan to replace with different vegetation.
You had mentioned also a plan that, that was shared with you in terms of putting some buffering in. Does this plan that I'm sharing look familiar to you?
Yes, and that looks very similar to what Fotus showed me at his house, and he explained to me when we discussed the removal of the trees that sat on our property line.
And is this a true and accurate representation of a close-up?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Brant, I, I have to object on behalf of the Wilsons to these documents. They were not filed 24 hours in advance as required by the executive orders.
You don't have the floor right now, you do not have the floor.
I, but I do need to object, I have to preserve the right, Mr. Chairman. I, it's very hard for me to view these at this small scale, I can't, I can't blow them up.
You don't have the floor right now, you have to come back when he starts talking.
I'm just, please note my objection to these documents being before the board as being a violation of the executive order, and I'll stop.
For the board, I just want to go on, these are, these are two images that were shown in the application, these are also in the staff report. What I wanted to note, particularly in the top right, and I also wanted to compare this with the existing regulations in terms of certain items that are exempt from the yard requirements. You can see in the upper left that there is a fence that's included as part of this proposal. You know, the interesting thing that, that the board would note is that fences themselves are exempt from the yard requirement. So we could put a, a fence literally just adjacent to the property line. So it's certainly that element of the proposal is certainly not in contravention of the comprehensive plan and is not grossly contrary to what the regulations propose. Likewise, in terms of the arbors, there's an exemption for that. I guess we could have a conversation about the difference between a pergola and an arbor, as I understand it, the town has said that a pergola is attached to the structure, whereas an arbor is not. Perhaps a pergola has a structure underneath it, whereas an arbor does not. But in any event, those are cousins of each other, so again, an arbor would be permitted here. The purpose of this is to explain to the board that, under the existing regulations, elements of this are permitted within a setback. And to the extent that we need to show that the requesting variance is in conformance of the comprehensive plan, I think it's important to note, based upon this regulation that we're proposing, is not night and day different than the sorts of things that are already permitted under the regulation. The other thing that I wanted to point out to the board are the support that the Wilsons have obtained from the neighbors. What I've done, and there are in the record, all of the support letters have been submitted and are available to the board. I've highlighted on the GIS map all of the properties that have submitted support letters. I just want to read a few of them, I think a few of the neighbors are going to speak themselves, but I, I think it is telling that those in the neighborhood are able to speak both to the topography issues, as well as the construction on the neighboring site, as well as the extent to which the proposal for this modest pergola is within, certainly within keeping of the neighborhood. Tess and Negist, they are the former property owners at One Plover. They sold this property to the Georgiottis, so they know a little something about it. They can attest to the close proximity and lack of privacy between the homes, especially considering the recent removal of matured trees and newly built concrete retaining wall by the new owners. They believe that the pergola, similar to the sample image, will not only provide them, i.e. the Wilsons, with additional privacy that they seek, but will in fact be a lovely addition to the property. but will in fact be a lovely addition to the property. Mr. Kitzkeel, pardon me, has also submitted a letter of support. He's a little bit more direct with his feelings on some of this. He supports the application. He says that the Wilsons have been virtually overrun by the adjacent property to the north, which has created an atmosphere resembling a World War II era bunker and renovations which have been made to the Wilson property. Renovations which have made the Wilson property almost uninhabitable. The other Wilsons, no relation at Four and Six Seagull, indicate that while it all may be legal, the renovations to the adjacent property and the removal of the matured trees have created an unsightly view for the Wilsons. The Wilsons' request is a very small ask when you consider how their property and lifestyle has been negatively impacted by the renovations. Charles Beebe at Three Seagull across the street says that Jen and Dan have been wonderful neighbors who consistently maintain their property, making all improvements in harmony with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. They have been visually overrun by the newly erected cement walls and structure at One Seagull. Hence, we request you support their variance to provide some privacy and relief from this hardship. Lastly, Amy Estherbrook notes that one, that the new owner of One Seagull has both physically and visually imposed their unsightly and seemingly interminable construction project upon us all. The newly erected imposing bare cement walls are suitable to architectural elements for perhaps a concentration camp or to enclose large zoo animals, but look unsightly in a coastal New England residential neighborhood. The newly created landscape is not at all in keeping with the architectural language and overall aesthetic of the neighborhood. Talk about how the Wilsons have been visually overrun by the new construction at One Seagull Lane. Todd Manorino also indicates that the wall structure that was constructed is right on the property line and is intrusive because of the tight lot lines. And is, in addition, the wall is extremely close to the house structure as well. I know Mr. Brant cited some case law, and I'm going to do the same. There is ample case law to support proposition that topography, it's a unique feature, certainly sufficient basis for the board to grant variance. Fuller's Treatise has been cited by Mr. Brant, it's cited by me. It was also cited by our state appellate court in Shoalhoff versus Zbida Norwalk. Topographic conditions on the property involved in the application may be the basis for granting a variance as long as other properties in the area do not have the same problem. I think everybody can attest that there are no other properties that have this problem with the thirteen-foot retaining wall just a few feet from their property line. Likewise, in Murphy versus Planning and Zoning Board Appeals of Town of Greenwich, our courts have long recognized that topographical conditions on the property involved in a variance application may be the basis of granting variance. In compo, properties, specific topographic conditions can be a proper ground for the granting of a variance if it is unique to that property, as it is here. As the Supreme Court declared in Plum, a hardship resulting from the peculiar topography or condition of the land or particular location will make the property unsuitable for the use permitted in the zone in which it lies, may well be a hardship as is contemplated by the ordinance. As that lined above, there is substantial evidence in the record that's topography of the subject premises presented, presented unique problems. In that case, it was due to a water runoff. In this case, it is the steep, steep grade that's now been turned into a retaining wall. Relevant case law thus supports the board's finding of inadequate hardship due to topographical issues in the granting of a corresponding variance. Lastly, crucial, where the hardship arises as the result of a voluntary act done by one other than the one whom the variance will benefit. In other words, where it's been done by the neighbor at One Plover rather than my clients at Two Plover, the board may in the sound exercise of its legal discretion grant variance. So based upon the foregoing, I will conclude by simply stating that we believe that this topographical issue is unique to the neighborhood. There are severe topographic features. They have been exacerbated not by my client's actions, but by the construction of the neighbor at One Plover. Also, unique is the neighbor's benefit of having a five-yard, excuse me, five-foot setback, which is certainly something that our clients don't have, nor any of the other properties in the neighborhood. The proposed structure is modest and in keeping with the neighborhood, as all of the other neighbors have attested. It's not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. There's a hardship. It is unique. It is not self-created, and we request approval.
All right. Thank you. Now, I asked the members of the board, Jeff, do you have any questions?
Nothing at the moment. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Nat, do you have anything?
No.
James? Okay. Diana, do you have any questions? Unmute. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Candy Palmer here. I just have a point of housekeeping. Every time Attorney Piatso said One Plover Lane, he actually meant One Seagull Lane, so for the record.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct. I apologize.
Thank you.
All right. Did you ask Mark?
Oh, that's right, because I, Mark, did you have any questions?
This time, I have quite a bit to talk about later, though.
Okay, later is when we, when we as a board convene, you mean? Okay. I guess my question is, I drove by the property today, and I could see the conditions there. Has any thought been given to putting, is there room for like some kind of evergreens on your side on the at Two Over Lane?
There may be some, but the issue that we're having is that there is not a lot of room. My clients were counting on some of that being planted on the neighboring property. You, let me just try to share, go back and I'll share a photo.
I can remember you saying that they had promised that they'd put something back in.
Yeah, and and if there is some issue, I'm not going to reshow those slides, and we can strike those slides from the record. Deal with it that way. But let me go back and show a photo from the property line that I think illustrates it. So I, what, what you can see in this photo from the property line is obviously the stakes are the property line. You can see the edge of the existing deck, which has been there for almost twenty-five years. It's going to be extremely difficult to get into there a root ball of some sort of arbor by the whatever you may need. You know, the other issue is, keep in mind, up here on the top right, you know, there's going to be a deck up on this third story. So, you know, I don't know how tall of an arbor by the you need to get in there. Is it thirty feet? Is it forty feet? To actually provide any sort of screening there. The, the reason why we're looking to have something, and again, it's not even like it's a roof, but it's just something to have have verticals, because I don't really think that you can attack it. I mean, we looked at a fence. Could we put a fence on the property line? Well, if you go seven feet, my understanding is anything over that, or at least over eight, you might need to go to building. Eight feet doesn't really do you anything. And so given the limited space here, it's, it's, it's an issue.
So the pergola, you're going to put in there so that the slats will not allow from the, the neighbor's house up above to see down there is what you're saying?
Yes, it's, it's the, my, my clients have looked at it and they've planned it out, and just the way that the horizontal joists, if you will, are going to be, they are just the way that they line up are going to provide some, some privacy. Obviously, it's not going to be opaque. But having some cover will be of assistance to them at having some privacy from from above next door.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if no one from the board has any questions for the applicant, I'm gonna open the floor to anybody in favor of this application. So is there anybody in favor that wants to speak?
Oh, yeah. Hey, guys. Jake Haskill here. Am I okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, give your address, please.
One Plover Lane, which you guys have been erroneously reporting as someplace else. But yeah, I'm right up the street, and I'm glad to see you took the interest of coming over and taking a look at the property, and I hope the rest of your board has. And let me thank you guys for the thankless service that you do. That being said, you know, I've been here for twenty-six years, and we have sort of coexisted and looked out for one another here in the neighborhood. And I got, this, this to me is just atrocious to, I'm the guy that wrote the Berlin Wall letter, you know? That's, I'm sorry, but that's what it looks like here. I feel like I'm living in Dresden after the bombing. It's incredible. And the poor Wilsons, their property is like, you know, you, you might as well put them in a goldfish bowl and invite the hordes over to take a look at them. You know, I, I think I strongly urge you to please consider them favorably here.
All right. Thanks, Drew.
I would like to speak.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Negus Rata. I live at, I'm at two oh seven Mason's Island Road. We are the previous owners of One Seagull Lane. And as a previous owner, we can really attest to the close proximity and the lack of privacy between the two homes. And this was really exacerbated recently by all the changes that were made at Seagull Lane and also by the removal of the trees. And while we were there, we really tried to kind of provide some kind of screening between the two properties, because the privacy issue is, it's a real issue. It's no joke. So we were trying to be, we're trying to be very cognizant so, and provide screening so we don't invade the neighbor's privacy. And so what they're asking now is really is, it will give them that needed privacy, and also Jen and Dan always have a good taste in doing upgrading the property. And I know they'll do it really in a good taste that it will add some kind of charm and some kind of, it would really beautify the area. And I just want to say also, they are really very thoughtful homeowners. They put a lot of thought into what they're doing, and they've been wonderful neighbors while we were there. And I asked the board that I would like you to know that my family and I have no issue whatsoever with the proposed plan, and we fully support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, here, nobody else. I'll now open the floor to those in opposition. Nobody in opposition?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, Attorney Mark Brant, B-R-A-N-S-E, representing the George Addis family. I wrote a letter to the board dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. I'm not going to read it aloud on the record. You already have it. But there's some things that I do want to emphasize with regard to what you've heard so far and also amplify in some other items. You have heard, and I'm, I know I'm going to mispronounce this attorney, is it Peacock?
Piatso.
Piatso?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Attorney Piatso has, has said repeatedly, and the Wilsons have said that they, they are in compliance with the ten-foot side yard. Their site plan that is submitted to you, their application form that is submitted to you, and the photos that they showed you here tonight clearly indicate that is not the case. The deck for which they seek privacy is by their own application form, one point five feet from the property line. I, but before I wrote my letter, I checked with Building Enforcement Officer Candace Palmer to ask, are decks governed by the required setback? And the response was, yes, they are considered structures. Decks must comply with the setback. I'm sure she will confirm that on the record. So this deck is not supposed to be located in the side yard. Now, whether it's been more than three years, it certainly looks new, attorney. Let's start with this again. Indicated, Peacock indicated that that the deck has been repaired. As noted in your staff report, there is no record of any building permits for the deck. There's also no record of any building permits for the outdoor shower, which would have required at least a plumbing permit. When it was done, we can dispute. But the fact of the matter is that this lack of privacy is totally self-created because the deck isn't supposed to be within one point five feet of the property line. It's supposed to be ten feet from the property line. And again, I do not understand how anyone can say that it complies with the ten-foot side yard when it does not. It simply does not. You've heard a great deal of testimony tonight that the Wilsons are lovely people. I'm sure that they are. I've never met them. I hope I do someday. But the board is not crowning Miss Congenial at a beauty pageant. The board is exercising legal authority to grant variances, and those variances must comply with the law. Law, as you know, is that they are to be granted sparingly and only under the most extreme conditions. There must be a practical confiscation. I've reviewed the case law in my letter. You've heard tonight about how ugly the cement walls are on the George Addis property. That property is still under construction. The contractors are actively working there. The walls are to be veneered in stone and then planted with climbing plantings. That is not the finished product. The George Addis family themselves would not want a bare concrete retaining wall. They have to worry about how their property looks from, from the street, from neighboring properties in terms of protecting its value. So they would be crazy to leave them like that. And in fact, they have no intentions of doing so. So for those who think that this is going to end up as, as a Berlin Wall or whatever, no, that is not the plan. And I want to reassure everyone about that. Attorney Peacock has said to you that there isn't really room for landscaping. Well, there isn't room for landscaping because they built too close to the property line. This is, we keep coming back to that. That the, the deck and the privacy that they're trying to protect on the deck, the deck is one point five feet from my client's property line. You've been told repeatedly and correctly that the George Addis family have done everything in accordance with the zoning regulations. That is true. The, the retaining walls, all of that is allowed. So I, that, that's something that should have been anticipated. The other thing we want to note to you about the deck, and again, as evidenced by the lack of any building permits being issued, that deck has no foundation. The one corner of it is just resting on a rock. And this is a flood zone. In the event of a major flood event, that deck could be carried by wave action and become basically a giant frisbee traveling and damaging properties, not only the Wilson property, but of course, the George Addis property or even other properties. The reason people are required to get building permits is so that things are built correctly, so that they are built in a way that is safe in a flood-prone area, as this is. Now, Attorney Peacock has told you that there is, there are, that the hardship claim, by the way, not the one on their application form, but the one claimed now is topography. There are limitless properties in the town of Stonington where there is grade, where one property is higher than the other. If that's a hardship, you'll be handing out variances like candy bars. You saw the photographs that Attorney Peacock showed you. Those photographs show you that there's that very low railroad tie wall. And you can see that the difference in grade at ground level is only a few feet. The slopes that he showed you, those steep slopes, that's where now some of the retaining walls are to eliminate those, those steep grades. But if you have many, many properties in the town of Stonington where, where one property is, is a few feet or four or five feet higher than the one next to you, that, that's not, that's nothing unusual about that. The, the George Addis deck that he says will be built, and he's correct, will have to comply with the setback because decks have to comply with setbacks. So there will be, there will have to be ten feet from the property line, like any other deck. The, the case law, also the case law The, the, the case law, also the case law where he cited to due to the actions of others, he said, he quoted, that was, I think, the Kessel case. And he was saying that it, it's like such as your neighbor. No, that is not what the case was describing at all. The case was describing a situation where it's something outside the control of the owner. It is, it is innate to the property. It is part of the property itself. Not what someone else legally does on their property. If someone develops in accordance with the zoning regulations, that should be foreseeable. It's, so I, I think, I think really all I can say to you is there is simply no possible legal ground for hardship here. Whatever hardship there is, is self-created because the deck was put where it is not supposed to be. The deck is one and a half feet from the property. If you're worried about the privacy, just pull it back. The other thing I pointed out to you in the photos that I, that I submitted in advance as required by the executive orders, that I did not spring on you tonight where, where other people can't see them or view them or amplify them. I provided you photos to show that the Wilsons have another very large patio on the other side of the building. So they have plenty of space for decks, patios, recreation, privacy. But for some reason, they want to shoehorn it in 1.5 feet from the George Addis property line, and I have no idea why. They can have, they can have a shower somewhere else. And I quoted you cases that talked about decks specifically and pointed out that decks could be located somewhere else. This deck could be lower. They already have other decks and patios. This one could, could be shortened. If, if they, if they bring, if they bring the deck back, so it's only projecting five feet to the side yard. Okay, if it's only, if it's five feet from the property line, then there's plenty of room for landscaping. Again, the hardship that's present here is because the Wilsons or their predecessors, I, I don't know. Somebody built this deck with no building permit. And they built it in the required setback, and they built it within one and a half feet of the property line. And now they're saying, oh gee, I have no privacy because I built it in one and a half feet of a property. How can you expect privacy when you build within one and a half feet of somebody else's property? There's simply no hardship here, no legally recognizable hardship. I'm open to questions from the board.
This is Mark Mitzko. I have several questions for you.
Certainly, sir.
Number one.
I, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Can you, can you boost volume at all or get closer to your mic?
You hear me better now?
Yes, that is better. Thank you.
Okay, my first question to you is, other than the legal aspect of this debt being a zoning violation, what other complaint would your client have about this application? Other than the possible zoning violation?
Well, I guess as a lawyer, it's sort of hard for me to, to think of something other than, than, than the law. But I think, I think the, the answer is, is simply that it, it, it brings activity closer to, more activity closer to the property line. And the reason why the Wilsons say that they want to enclose this space with a pergola and a fence, the justification they've given you tonight is so that they can use it more. Well, that means more activity within a half, one and a half feet of the George Addis property. Why, why would, why would anyone want that if you could avoid it?
So you're saying that your, your client is concerned that the Wilsons may have more activity against the property line than they have now by putting this pergola over a deck? That's, did I understand you correctly?
I, I think that certainly is, is one reason, yes. And Mr., Mr. George Addis is, is with us. Do you have anything? Bodhi, would you like to add something to that?
I'm not quite through with my questions.
No, no, I, I, no, no, I know, but with regard to this question that you're asking now, if I've left something out, I would, I would ask Mr. George Addis to, to, to tell me what I missed.
You haven't left anything out. I just don't happen to agree with you.
Well, that's okay. No, but I, but I, I do have the right to ask my client if there's some other reason why this is objectionable to him, and that is what I'm doing.
Yeah, that'd be great. You could ask him all you want. My question, other than that, is if your client's main objection is that this deck was in some way a zoning violation, my point to you is it has never been found to be a zoning violation by, by zoning enforcement officer or anybody in the town. This deck has been there for 23 years and it falls, it falls under the category of what's called a non-conforming structure.
If it's been there.
By their own regulations, we have, as the zoning Board of Appeals have granted variances from hundreds of non-conforming structures. So other than the legal aspect of it, I don't see whether your client has a complaint.
The, you are, if it's more than three years, then it is considered a legal non-conforming structure. You are correct. But the, but the, the factory means that it's not supposed to be there. And therefore there's no hardship for lack of privacy for something that's supposed to be.
Not been proven that it's not supposed to be there. That has not been determined that it's not supposed to be there.
There's a 10-foot required setback for this zone.
By what you just said, by anything that was there more than three years, this deck happens to be there 23 years, it's accepted as a non-conforming structure. You can't change that.
True, but we don't have to exacerbate it. We don't have to make it worse. And that's, that's what's being sought.
That is not up to you. That's up to us.
You are the decision makers.
Absolutely. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thanks, Mark.
Welcome. I'm sorry, there's two Marks.
Attorney Mark, do you have more?
Not unless there's answered questions. I would just, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. George Addis says he's unable to connect for some reason. He's watching, but he can't. So there may be other reasons why this is objectionable to his family, and I, I don't know what they are. I, I, I know that there is the concern that, that this is increasing the height and increasing the visibility of, of this, of this structure within, within the 10-foot setback. And that is the required setback.
Alright. Does anybody else on the board have questions? For this view in opposition? If not, the Wilsons have anything in rebuttal? Because some, some new things were brought up.
Just a few, a few things, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the, this issue was raised in the application. Hardship claimed included a privacy screen and a, seeking a privacy screen in a tight space while also providing an aesthetically pleasing appearance to all who can see it. The structure would help shield the view from the newly constructed cement retaining wall from our depth backyard in the water. My clients aren't lawyers. They didn't use the word topography, but everywhere through their application, they made clear that topography was a big driving factor here. Secondly, there's a lot about building permits or not building, I don't know if they're building permits. There's nothing in the record to support that. I'm very careful about not offering testimony as an attorney, but rather offering legal argument. So I really don't think there's any facts which weigh on that one. Here's the big thing, though. The deck's a red herring. I understand why the neighbors are focused on the deck. Because they point at it and they say, oh, it's a self-created hardship. You created the problem. The deck has nothing to do with this application. If that were grass, we would be seeking to put this pergola up. We're not putting the pergola up, and I think my client's testimony supports this, to try to increase the use of the deck. The expressed reason for it is because there's a shower that's outside the setback. And there's a staircase into the house that's outside the setback. And they want to be able to, be able to use the side yard of their house regardless of whether or not there's a deck without having somebody towering above from next door and basically looking down on them. So I get it. It's very easy to say, oh, self-created hardship, but that's not what we have here. Take the deck away. So what? We still need a pergola or some sort of shade, privacy screening, something to allow us to have the enjoyment of our property from a neighbor who's next door. So I, I, I understand the temptation to argue that. But this is not a self-created hardship. Secondly, there are some comments about, and I know this is a background noise. About how we're going to be handing out variances left, right, and center. Of course, there's topography differences between lots. No question about that. Many parts of Stonington have much larger lots than this, and it's not an issue because you have a lot of distance between houses. This, of course, is an area that was developed before zoning. We have small lots. Our houses on top of each other. That, of course, goes into the mix. It's part of the uniqueness. This is not your typical area of Stonington. So there are unique features here that exacerbate the topographical change. If you're in an area that zoned our 40 with one acre lots and you have a 10-foot grade difference between two lots, no big deal. No big deal. But when you have a 13-foot, 14-foot, 15-foot grade change between two houses that are, I don't know, about 15 feet away from each other, that's a big deal. And, you know, Mr. Brance talked about how their deck and everything's going to be 10 feet from the property line. Well, you know, they have a five-foot setback on their property because they're special, because they're undersized. So, you know, they're, they're, they get the advantages of the zoning code. They get the advantages of a smaller setback. They get the advantages of maxing out their height development. But when we're looking for just a little bit of privacy from all of that, the answer is no. We're told that we're supposed to expect this. You've heard from neighbors who have been living in this neighborhood for decades who, you know, their testimony reasonably leads to the conclusion that nobody would have expected this. You have the former property owner who sold the house to the George Addises, who is aghast by this. So in response, I don't think I've added anything new other than to respond to what Attorney Brance has said. I don't think that he's done anything to undercut this. There is a unique topography change here that is not in common with the neighborhood or other areas of Stonington. I understand that there is a, so on that, I certainly think that the board has ample authority both factually and legally to grant the variance. The last piece of it is I understand that there's some procedural argument that's been raised. If Mr. Brance is going to cling to that and, and maintain his objection, you know, I don't want to get into procedural hassle. If there are things that he wants to do to review my submission more, I'll give it to him. We can come back here in a week and he can add whatever he wants. But if that's what he's requesting is to have this public hearing continued so that he can review those documents, that's fine. I don't want to have an approval undone by some technicality. And unfortunately, we're living in a world where we're anticipating that any little technicality will be taken advantage of here. So if that's what Mr. Brance wants, then we'll consent to a short continuance of a public hearing so that he can come back in a week or whenever he wants to, to address whatever slides he objects to.
Alright, thank you. At this time, I want to open the, the floor to anybody with any general comments. So if you have general comments, please speak now.
Hello?
Yes?
This is Heather Campbell. I live at 205 Mason's Island Road. And I am one of the people in support of the Wilsons' plan. I was listening to the, the testimony given by Attorney Brance, and I had a couple of questions for him. And as a master gardener, I'm curious about putting a stone facade on a retaining wall that I'm assuming is right on the property line and then have things growing up it, vegetation growing up it. That is the worst thing you could do to a, to a wall. Except the trees would be an important part to put. So I'm questioning what he's talking about, growth of things growing up. And the second thing which Greg alluded to is how does Mr. Brance know that there was never a permit taken out at the time that the, the deck was constructed 23 years ago? So those are my two questions.
Okay, thank you. There's no record of, of, of the, of, of, what do you call it? A building permit for that deck. There's no record. That's in Stonington Town Hall. So that's why we know that's not there. And for the other question, I turn the floor over to Attorney Brance.
Yeah, I'd like to know about the growth, what you're, the plantings that you're planning on putting in.
I, I, I don't know. I know Mr. George Addis tried to call it. He had some trouble making the connection. So I, he, he has told me that they intend to, to veneer that with stone and to have landscaping. The precise species, I don't know, and they may change their minds too. I, I'm, I'm, I, I have not seen the landscaping plan myself, so that's the best I can tell you.
Okay, then I would kindly suggest that you wouldn't put it in because it might not happen. And is the wall right on the property line?
That's, that's, as indicated in the staff report, that's, the, most of it is not, no. The taller walls that you saw in the photographs from Attorney Peacock are not. Those are well back. There is now pending, there is now pending litigation between the Wilsons and George Addis families about encroachments on both sides. Encroachments, the Wilson to the George Addis property and about a two-inch encroachment or one and a half inch encroachment of the wall on the Wilson side. And it's pointed out in the staff, you may not have seen the staff report, Ms. Campbell. As, as Candace Palmer points out, that's not the board's issue, and that's why I didn't bring it up.
I see. Thank you.
And neither did Attorney Peacock either. Not, both of us did the right thing by not, by not alluding to that because it really doesn't bear on.
Right.
That's fine. I just wondered how far the wall was if you were going to try and put some plantings crawling up the wall. Wouldn't that be on the Wilson side?
The, the, the taller, the taller wall, that's not the issue.
Right. Alright. Is there anyone else that has a general comment? Okay, carrying none. I'm now closing the public hearing.
Hold on.
Who said, hold on?
Staff, I believe Mr. Attorney Piatu had said something about perhaps continuing.
Oh.
Well, Mr. Brance raised an objection claiming that certain items were put in less than 24 hours in advance. He claims that there's an executive order that I violated. And if that's the case, and he wants to hold true to that objection, then what I would ask is that the board keep the public hearing open and allow him his 24 hours and schedule a special meeting after he's had a chance to review the presentation and add whatever additional items he wants. If he wants to hold on to that objection, that's what I would suggest we do. If he is waiving that objection, I want that clear, but I do not want to have a situation where action's taken and then I get sprung upon me in a legal brief at Superior Court that certain things that I showed the board were, you know, untimely presented. So I would just ask for the record to be clear as to whether or not there's still an objection. And if there is an objection, I'd ask to keep the public hearing open and have a small continuance of the board's hearing.
This is Jeff Walker. I'd like to chime in if I could at the moment. I don't think there are any documents submitted that would change the board's thinking anyway, one way or the other. And I would urge the, your opposition attorney to rethink that statement. I'd like to wrap this up tonight if we could.
Attorney Brands?
There we go. I, I don't know what to say, Mr. Chairman, for two reasons. First of all, you know, I, I've already been disadvantaged. I'm not sure being able to review those things now is going to do me much good. I don't think that, that avoids the prejudice. The, the other thing is it is customary in the land use bar at least, that when you know there's an attorney involved on the other side, that you contact that attorney. If, if, if counsel for the applicant said just called me and even gotten into me today, that, that is, that is a courtesy that is normal. Whenever I know there's an attorney involved in the case, I always contact that attorney and say, hi, I know you're on the other side. Exchange information. I regret that didn't happen in this case. My, my involvement has been evident since April 12th. But I, I, if the board wants to wrap this up tonight, then by all means do so.
So you're, you're, you're fine with, with closing this up tonight?
It's, it's, it's not my choice.
I, I'm not comfortable with that, Mr. Chairman. If he claims that there's been a procedure, first of all, this, I'm not going to get into what's customary on the bar. It's neither here nor there. If there's an objection, and I'm going to read about three pages in a legal brief about how there's a violation of an executive order, then is absolutely is curable. We have many, many. We have many, many public hearings on applications for far more, more complex than this that have multiple public hearing dates, have multiple revisions to reports, multiple reports to present, revisions to presentations. And there's a lot of back and forth. And applicants and of butters and others in the neighborhood have a full and fair opportunity to review that stuff. So he has every opportunity to cure any issue. I would just ask him, how long do you want? Do you want a week? Do you want a month? But I'm not going to be in a position where he just sort of says, well, do whatever you want. If he's not going to waive an objection, then I'm going to ask for a continuance of the public hearing, as disappointing as that is. If he's, if he truly says, if you want to move forward, move forward, then I need to know that there's a waiver of any objection.
Attorney Brants?
I, I, I'm, I'm not about, I'm not about to waive my inability to, I mean, the photographs of the property, I'm not worried about. But some of those plans I couldn't read at all. And, and I, and I, and I, it, it has to affect the presentation that I made. And I can review them from now till doomsday. And I don't know how I'm going to be able to read, to, to turn the clock back and, and do my presentation again. So I, you, if, if that's, so the, if, yes, I'm being asked to, to waive a legal right on behalf of my client, and no, I can't do that.
Okay.
So how he, how he wants to, to deal with that is his call. He is the attorney for the applicant.
Okay, so I, I think it's clear that if I had emailed this to him yesterday, he would have had 24 hours to review this and put whatever presentation he wants. I'll email it to him now. It's large. I don't even know how I'm going to email it. I'll get it to him. So rather than having 24 hours, he can have a week or a month. And that's fine.
Actually, just put it on the website. If it's submitted to the town, it'll go on the website and I can do it. Everyone can do it.
Fine. Which is how it's supposed to be done. Then I'm going to ask to leave the public hearing open. And to the extent that Mr. Brants or his clients want to offer any other testimony, I, I would ask that we come back. I apologize for the imposition on the board with regard to this. And if, if the board's willing to have a special meeting before June, that'd be great. If not, I understand everybody's busy and taking time from family to come to a ZBA meeting is tough. So I would ask the board not close the public hearing, leave it open, and if Mr. Brants wants to submit whatever else he wants to submit, he will have ample, ample time to do that.
Okay, if, if that's the case, then we'll leave it open and we'll continue at our next, next meeting, which will be at on June 8th at the Stonington Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Do you need a motion to do that? Jim Stanton?
To leave it open? I don't believe so.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion to leave it open. So that that completes the public hearing portion of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's, I mean, sorry about that. That was long. So anyway, what we have left to do is, did everybody get a chance to review the, the meeting, the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes.
We did.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
This is Jeff Walker. I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
And this is Mark. I'll second him.
All right, thank you. Jeff did. Nat, are you in favor?
Yes.
And so Mark, I'm in favor. James, Jim Stanton? You in favor?
I'm in favor.
All right, thanks. So that's everybody. Everybody that can vote tonight. Sorry, Diana. So the, the minutes from last meeting are approved. And like I said, our next meeting will be June 8th at the police department. So please arrive like five minutes early. We're going to be in person, so you have to wear pants.
For a change of pace.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it is definitely in person at the police station. You do need to wear masks if you cannot be seated more than six feet away. If for some reason the executive order changes, we'll be sure to make everyone aware.
Will, will the meeting be available online or not?
As far as I know, right now, the police station will not be televising anything. The only thing that they were going to be able to do was to put something on Facebook. There was no way anyone could call in. So you will have to come in person.
I got to tell you guys, this format works out really good. And, and I, I think you, you should keep this as an option going forward.
One of the public acts that they were thinking, if we had tried to just stay strictly virtual, the state was looking at towns having to supply the means for people to be able to call in. In other words, laptops for people who didn't have their own. Yeah, they were forcing everybody to go live.
For the God sakes, the amount of money I pay you guys in taxes, you could probably buy laptops for the entire country.
Well, if I couldn't afford to buy me one, I'm here in the town hall doing this meeting, not at home.
I'm complaining, kids. Go get out and go get some fresh air. Come to the meeting.
Talk to your boss. Thank you so much, folks. You did a great job.
Thanks.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you so much.
One question, Mr. Chairman, before you go.
Who's that?
Jim Stanton.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
We have to wear pants. Are jogging pants legal?
Yeah, you can wear jogging pants.
Only if you jog over.
Has there been a vote to adjourn the meeting?
Not yet. I wanted to ask you, Candy, do you know if the, is the police station's the, the conference room there still set up the same?
As I know, I have a meeting coming up. I'll, I'll know then.
Because it's going to be hard to be, you know, if there's all five of us to be six feet apart or six, seven.
You'll have to, you'll have to wear masks if you can't be six feet apart. So bring a mask.
Everybody bring a mask. Has everybody been vaccinated?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, good.
Yes.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
A motion to adjourn has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mark.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.